I will call this meeting to order. There is a quorum. The meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording may be webcast. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. I will read the closed session topics for tonight. Public employee assignment, reassignment appointment. Public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. And we will adjourn to closed session. We're going to reconvene our public session. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Special board meeting for student recognition and awards. I will now call this special session to order. The meeting guidelines are posted in the theater lobby. As a reminder, this is a student related event. Face coverings must be worn at all times while inside the theater. If you would like pictures this evening of the event, please fill out the yellow form located at the table in the theater lobby. Cookies and water are also available on your way out of the front theater. All right, I will introduce the interpreter Linguistica interpreting and translation will be interpreting the reading into Spanish this evening via Zoom platform. This is an option to select Spanish audio at the bottom of the Zoom window. For persons who are present in person and who would like to hear the Spanish interpretation of this meeting, please pick up the headphones from the table that located at the theater lobby. Linguistica Interpretation and Translation interpretará la reunión en español esta noche. A través de la plataforma de la línea de Zoom, hay una opción para seleccionar el audio en español en la parte inferior de la ventana de Zoom. Para personas que están presente y quieren persona y desean escuchar la interpretación de la expresión en español de la reunión. Por favor recoja audífonos de la mesa localizada en el lobby del teatro. Okay, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording and webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Can you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay. I will report action taken in closed session on a vote of five to two of an appeal of a pervert matter. That was a decision. It was a vote of five to do to appeal a pervert matter. Okay, our first item on the agenda is public recognition of the fall athletic team, Mr. Roberto Vaca.
Good evening, President Guerrero, members of the board and interim superintendent. Mr. Cardoza, my name is Roberto Vaca. I serve as an area administrator. And tonight we are here to present to you one of the teams from Fall Sports. That made it to one of the highest levels of athletic competition, which is the Valley Championship. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce Principal Michael Lambert.
We'll give him a second to get up on stage. Good evening, Board President Guerrero, Board members, interim superintendent Cardoza and staff. I'm Michael Lambert. I'm the principal of Golden West High School. And we are here tonight to honor the boys' water polo team that finished as the 2021 Central Section Division Three runner-up. They are coached by our first year teacher and our head coach Carl White. As a sign of a good team that is well coached is a team that improves as the season progresses. Our boys' water polo team is an example of this. They started the season one and four, but then responded by winning 15 of their next 20 games. The keys to the season were our team chemistry, our work effort, and our willingness to believe in our coach. Additionally, senior Matthew Wheeler, go ahead and raise your hand, Matthew. Yep, he broke the school record for a season with 92 ejections drawn. Now, that's not 92 ejections as he was thrown out the game. But he was such a difficult player to guard. These resulted in temporary power plays when another, one of the members of the other team is taken out for a short time. But once again, I'd like to congratulate our 2021 boys, Golden West Boys Water Polo Team. Congratulations.
That was nice. And I just want to say that I saw a lot of those games at Golden West Water Polo. Okay, our next item. Our next item is 4.2 Student Achievement Awards and Recognition, Mr. Rick Hamilton, area administrator.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, Board members, interim superintendent Cardoza. My name is Rick Hamilton, area administrator. And tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing outstanding high school students in the areas of reading growth, consumer family studies, industrial technology, social studies, visual and performing arts, and educational options, overall academic achievement. The board will also recognize the United Student Association of ISEU, USAV, Winter Student of the Season. USAV consists of ISEU Unified School District Secondary Students, dedicated to the improving the education programs and representing student views to the Board of Education. These students represent the best of the best from our schools in the areas for which they have been selected. And we are very proud of them for their accomplishments and for how they represent their schools and our district. Each of them is certainly worthy of this special recognition tonight. But before we begin, I would like to first recognize and thank the parents and families of each of these outstanding students. Your support and encouragement is valued and appreciated. I would also like to recognize and thank their teachers and school staff who have supported their learning and successes. All of us share pride in the accomplishments of these students. We are very happy to take the time tonight to honor these students and to hear about their accomplishments. Students, you will receive a medal as part of your recognition, which you were invited to wear at your commencement ceremony. Also, photos of tonight's award presentation will be available. If you would print your name and email address clearly on the yellow forms located in the lobby, we'll make sure you have that access. At this time, I'd ask Ms. Michelle Reed, Principal of ISEU Charter Independent Study, to get us started.
Good evening, Board members, President Guerrero and interim superintendent Cardoza. My name is Michelle Reed and I serve as principal of ISEU Charter Independent Study. I am proud to present VCIS's Student Overall Achievement Award to Aries Johnson and Brian Sanchez Coellar. Aries is represented here tonight by her mom, Mrs. Johnson, and her supervising teacher Wendy Richards. And Brian is here this evening with his mom, Mrs. Sanchez. Starting with Aries, so if you want to step forward. Mrs. Richard states Aries is an outstanding mature student who was selected as a Quest Bridge National College Match finalist. She is well organized, motivated, and persistent to excel in all subject areas with a 3.95 GPA. As a senior at VCIS, Aries is taking our medical assistant program and interning with CUEA Health. She has successfully completed five COS courses and is currently enrolled in three more this spring semester. She has been working at Imago Church as the media production manager, creating graphics and designs, managing live streams, YouTube, and podcasts. Aries is well-rounded, focused on her future, and determined to succeed. After graduation, Aries would like to pursue a career in neuroscience. I have no doubt that she will be successful in any career she chooses to pursue and in all aspects of her life. It is with great pleasure that I present this overall achievement award to Aries Johnson. All right, Mr. Brian, would you like to step forward, please? Mrs. Hemp Hill, Brian's supervising teacher, states that Brian is an excellent student. Each week he comes to school with a positive attitude, admirable goals, and the determination to succeed. He is incredibly motivated, driven, and hardworking. Brian has a very high expectations of himself. He is not satisfied with test scores of an A. He wants that A+. He has many interests and loves to learn new things. Brian has taken COS courses for the last few semesters and is currently enrolled in three courses, including a sports medicine class, and enjoying them very much. I'm so impressed with Brian's renewed energy and focus, and I know he will continue to do great things. After graduation, Brian plans on pursuing a career in sports medicine. And it is with great pleasure that I present this overall achievement award to Brian Coellar Sanchez.
Our next school up making a return appearance to the stage will be ISEU Technical Early College with Principal Bill Davis.
I get to talk this time. All right. Good evening, President Guerrero, interim superintendent Cardoza, and members of the board. My name is Bill Davis and I'm proud to serve as the principal of VTAC High School. We're excited to be able to recognize four students tonight for outstanding academic achievement and for our USAV students of the season. To start with, we're going to start with Kristen Franks. Kristen, can you step forward? Thank you. VTAC is pleased to recognize Kristen Franks for outstanding academic achievement. Kristen is the daughter of Tracy and Josh Franks. She has a GPA of 3.98. It has completed 25 units at College Sequoia. After high school, Kristen plans to transfer to a university and major in ag business. She's still deciding which one she wants. She has a lot of offers right now. Her goal is to work in agricultural banking and finance. During her time at VTAC, Kirsten was involved in CSF and FFA. She was the chapter FFA reporter and president. She attended a delegate, as a delegate, at the, will be a delegate at the 2022 State FFA Convention this year. And she's competed in multiple contests, including creed speaking, job interview contest, and extemporaneous speaking. She shows dairy goats, swine, and horses for FFA and 4H. Kristen was also a member of the Tulare County Junior Fair Board. VTAC is proud to present Kirsten Franks with the Outstanding Academic Achievement Award for VTAC High School. All right, next, next, we have Elias Fricki. All right. VTAC is pleased to recognize Elias Fricki for outstanding academic achievement. Elias is the son of Tracy and Derek Fricki. Elias has a weighted GPA of 4.16 and has completed over 37 college units at colleges Sequoias. After high school, he would like to attend Montana State or Cal Poly, majoring in mechanical engineering. His career goal is to become a mechanical engineer or aerospace engineer. During his time at VTAC, Elias was involved in agriculture and FFA. He served as an FFA officer, school farm manager. He raised market swine and competed in a number of speaking competitions. Elias has been awarded the state FFA degree by the California Association of FFA. In addition to FFA, Elias was involved in CSF and competed in track and field and cross country, actually here at El Diamante High School. VTAC is extremely proud to present Elias Fricki with the Outstanding Academic Achievement Award for VTAC High School. Congratulations. All right, next up are USAV students. Our female USAV student of the season is Erica Jimenez. Erica is the daughter of Anna Vallejo Castro and Eric Jimenez Amayo. Erica has a 3.9 GPA and she's completed 20 units at College of Sequoias. After high school, she would like to attend UC Davis and study veterinary medicine. She's trying to decide if she wants to be a large or small animal veterinarian. Erica's leadership teacher, Ms. Van Aken, states Erica is a great example of what it means to be a leader. Since her freshman year, she has shown others how to be a leader on campus. She is always encouraging others to be involved in clubs and activities during or after school. She is currently an ASB officer, participates in our FFA veterinary science team, and is one of our farm managers for our goats. On top of all of her extracurricular activities, Erica also takes pride in her grades and academic achievements. VTAC is proud to recognize Erica Jimenez as the USAV Female Student of the Season. Congratulations, Erica. All right, our male USAV student of the season is Kenneth Serrato. Kenneth or Kenny. Love Kenny. Kenny is the son of Anita Pacheco and Javier Cardenas. Kenny has a GPA of 3.45 and is a staple on the VTAC campus. Kenny is involved in everything at VTAC, FFA leadership and yearbook. After high school, he wants to attend Universal Technical Institute and study motorcycle maintenance and repair. Kenny's leadership teacher, Ms. Van Aken, states Kenny is an outstanding student that always finds different ways to be involved with our school and community. He has volunteered at Saicon and did such a great job that he's been asked back to be a counselor again. Kenny is also one of the most caring students when it comes to his peers and staff. He goes out of his way to help others when they are struggling with any subject and always volunteers to help with anything going on around campus. And I would have to agree. VTAC is very proud to recognize Kenneth Serrato as the USAV male student of the season. Congratulations, Kenny.
Our next school up is Sequoia High School with Principal Adolfo Reyes.
Good evening, I'm the proud principal of Sequoia High School. Good evening, Board President, Mr. Guerrero, and interim superintendent, Mr. Cardoza. The following Sequoia High School recipients of tonight's awards are the embodiment of what Sequoia stands for, the school that restores. They are the promise of the fresh start, and they have rebuilt themselves to become amazing students of promise. My first student tonight is Miss Melissa Casada. She's joined by her parents tonight. Before arriving to Sequoia High School, Melissa was in a constant battle with personal challenges. In these times, many of us can relate with to that. Melissa soon was behind in classes, poor attendance, her motivation to begin school was lost. But the biggest pain was knowing that she had disappointed her family. But when Melissa arrived at Sequoia, she heard this big bear looking of a principal say, "Every student that arrives to Sequoia is promised a fresh start." The seed of rebirth was planted and a growth mindset took effect. Soon Melissa increased her attendance. She earned a 3.67 GPA. She is highly respected by teachers, staff, and fellow students, and she is on track to graduate early. But what feels Sequoia staff with so much pride is when a student like Melissa has regained the strength to dream again. Melissa's dream is to go to COS and transfer to the university in LA, earn a bachelor's degree, and the famous words we all like to hear, to become an English teacher, but in Korea. This is Sequoia Strong, and folks, I give you an amazing future English teacher, Miss Melissa Casada. Next, Brianna Oregón is a senior. Brianna's biggest challenge was belonging, and she felt incapable of accomplishing anything and just wanted to go. Hold on. I can't see it fogging up. All right, one more time. Brianna Oregón is a senior. Her biggest challenge was belonging, and she felt incapable of accomplishing anything and just wanted to go down the wrong path and give up completely. But Brianna has the heart of a giant sequoia tree whose purpose in life is just to keep growing no matter how many bolts of lightning may strike. Brianna has earned a 3.1 GPA and is one of our leading credit earning students. She spends her extra time completing online classes as well. Brianna is now on track to graduate early. She is in the process of registering to COS and for financial aid. We are so proud of everything Brianna has accomplished, and she'll be celebrating her birthday this week. What better gift to herself than earning one of our district's highest honor? Folks, I give you Miss Brianna Oregón. The two following students cannot attend, but I'd like to read about them. One is Ivory Medina. Before Sequoia High School, Ivory was barely going to school and not passing her classes. When she arrived at Sequoia, she realized she, as she said, "I focus more and I realize for life you need pay stubs and knowledge." "Life just hit me in the face," as she said. And her big dream now is she wants. These powerful words come from a young lady. The administration team has two words that describe her, persistent and committed, constantly nagging in us. "How many credits is she? How much more to graduate?" She's every, pretty much every single day in her counselor's office. Ivory wants to travel the big earth, and she wants to see all of its beauty. She wants to experience many cultures and food. As she put it, "I want to truly live before I die and experience everything." Sequoia is so happy to experience. Sequoia is happy to experience the beauty of Ivory Medina, a student who's destined to see the world. So folks, that would be Ivory Medina. Another Sequoia Strong student is Giovanni, aka Jill, who's not with us tonight. Like many students who come to Sequoia, Jill needed a place to find himself, to contribute, and to mold his path in life. Jill was highly respected amongst his peers. He spends countless hours in our ex after-school program, is on our undefeated basketball team, and is on a steady pace to graduate on time. Jill's goals are to go to COS and earn her degree in auto mechanics. He has a passion for cars and wants to make this his lifelong passion. He wants to find his dream car and rebuild it. He wants to have a good job and for, that affords him all the things that he currently cannot buy. He wants to build a life with someone, have kids, and I know that when I need a mechanic, I have Jill to call on. On behalf of Sequoia, we're proud that Giovanni Cipri has been restored to an amazing student that he's always been. Thank you very much.
Our next school up is ISEU Adult School, Principal Tammy Olson.
I'm not as tall as Adolfo. I just want to double check. Jackie, did you make it in? Yay! All right, good evening, Board President Guerrero, interim superintendent Cardoza, board members and members of the community. I'm Tammy Olson, ISEU Adult School principal, and tonight I am honored to present Jackie Alfaro as one of our outstanding students for our diploma program. Jackie, if you'll step forward. Jackie was nominated by her teacher Tiffany Bridgewater Rowe, and she is supported tonight by her family and her VAS family. Jackie has spent years working various jobs, including all the food industries and as an office personnel. She decided one day that she wanted to set a good example for her daughter and return to school and focus on herself and improving her education. She knew that she was going to have to work hard, and even though she was employed full-time, sometimes working over 40 hours a week, she was committed to getting her high school diploma so she could move forward in her professional life. Throughout her time at ISEU Adult School, she had to drop and start back up again, and drop and start back up again. But she chipped away at the 62 credits until she reached her goal. Now that she has earned her high school diploma, her next goal is to continue her education and go into business administration. Jackie provides a great example of hard work pays off, not only to herself and her daughter, but to those who know her. It gives me great pleasure to present this overall achievement award to ISEU Adult School's outstanding student, Jackie Alfaro. Tonight, I'm also honored to present Antonia Roscoe, an outstanding student from our high school diploma program as well. Antonia was nominated by his teacher, Ginger Allen. Antonia began the 2021-21-22 school year needing 53 credits to graduate. He told his teacher that he is very conscious of the fact that his study habits and consistent focus on school serve as a model for his children. So far, he has completed 29 credits and has made excellent grades. He is warm and engaging and is always looking for opportunities to better himself and care for his family. Antonia had this to say about his experience at the adult school. "It is an honor to receive this recognition. In the past five months, I have worked hard on my education. I intend to go to college after earning my high school diploma. It's never too late to work on high school credits, although I would have liked to complete it high school sooner." In 2000, he started a summer job with the intent of returning and finishing his senior year. Unfortunately, he had to drop out of high school to continue working and didn't return. 22 years later, I am trying to accomplish this goal, and I am joyful for the opportunity. Although I don't have my high school diploma yet, he's this close. I have the honor of being a production manager at the pistachio plant in Tulare. Tonight, he is supported by his wife and his family. And he said, last but not least, he would like to say thank you to his wife for her unconditional support. It gives me great pleasure to present this overall achievement award to ISEU Adult School's outstanding student, Antonio Roscoe. It gives me great pleasure to present this overall achievement award to Visalia Adult School's outstanding student, Antonio Roscoe.
Our next school up, the Mount Whitney High School, led by Principal Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I, we have two more students, I don't know if they made it. Okay, I'll get to them in a moment. Good evening, interim superintendent Cardozo, board president Guerrero, board members, parents, students, fellow educators. I am Bob Aguilar, principal of Mount Whitney High School. As a former Mount Whitney student, coach, teacher, assistant principal, and now principal, it is an honor to stand before you and introduce Mount Whitney's awards for Visual and Performing Arts, Enquirer and Band, Consumer Family Studies, Industrial Technology, Reading Growth, Social Science, and our USAV Winter Students of the Season. Let's start with our VAPA student in choir, that is Natasha Van Patten. Thank you, Natasha. Natasha's parents are James and Crystal Van Patten, and she is nominated by Mr. Howard. Natasha is a true leader in every sense of the word. Natasha is in all three of Mount Whitney's advanced choral ensembles as an academic tutor for one of the intro choir classes. She is this year's choir's president and is ready to lead any ensemble that she's in, whether it be running rehearsals or organizing events. Most recently, Natasha has been accepted to join the Choral Leadership Academy in Fresno, February eighteenth and nineteenth. She has continued to keep a high academic record throughout her time in high school. Natasha is a great example of what pioneers strive to be. She plans to study at COS in choral education and maybe someday be a music educator. Great job, Natasha, and congratulations. Our next student in VAPA for band is Faith Laney. Faith, will you stand up? There you go, thank you, Faith. Faith's parents are David and Gail Laney, and she is nominated by Mrs. Bentecourt. Faith has been a heavily involved member of both the band and the choir during her time at Mount Whitney High School. She is our band's drum major, which has many prerequisites in order to be effective in such a position. Faith is also two of the, is in two of the choir's top vocal ensembles. She is a dependable and positive influence on the students around, around her. She's an accomplished musician and a favorite with her peers. Faith keeps a high academic standard for herself as she is consistently, consistently in advanced placement classes. Faith is also a great member of our tennis team. Faith will be attending Cedarville University in Ohio, majoring in social work. It is Mount Whitney's honor to recognize Faith as our outstanding VAPA student in band. Way to go, Faith, congratulations. Next up, we have Mount Whitney's Consumer Family Studies honoring Kenya Sotomayor Alvarez. Kenya, please step forward, thank you. Kenya's parents are Augustine Sotomayor and Nancy Alvarez, and she is nominated by Mrs. Bachi. She has excelled academically, comes into class every day with a positive attitude, and she's always present and participates in all class activities. Kenya is patient and kind, always willing to help, willing to lend a helping hand, and is accommodating to whatever those around her need. Kenya hopes, has gone above and beyond and has shown excellent leadership skills. Teachers and students love working with Kenya, and she has been a joy and pleasure to have in her class. After high school, Kenya plans to study abroad, hopefully in Spain, to one day become a pediatrician. Please join me in congratulating Kenya for her Mount Whitney Consumer Family Studies Award. Well deserved, Kenya. Our next student is our Mount Whitney's Industrial Technology Outstanding Student, and that would be Brayden Roman. Brayden, step forward, please. Brayden's parents are Brian and Shannon Roman, and he is nominated by Mr. Patrick, who I believe is in attendance today, along with his fellow educators at Mount Whitney. Alright. Brayden is a senior who has been in the Agriculture Department for four years. Brayden has completed many individual and class projects, taking classes in the agricultural construction pathway, to which he has earned his, him top recognition. Brayden is a member of the Career Technical Judging Team for, to, for Farm Power, excuse me. He has been involved with Mount Whitney FFA and has participated in many activities, including raising market swine and being a member of the Tulare County Junior Fair Board. Brayden currently has a 3.64 cumulative GPA, and teachers describe him as a sincere, dependable, and hardworking student who has many friends that enjoy his company and always has a smile. Are you smiling under that mask? Alright, cool. Brayden plans to attend either Cal Poly or Fresno State after high school, majoring in Agriculture Engineering or Business. The Mount Whitney Agriculture Department is very proud to nominate Brayden Roman as the Industrial Techno, Technical Student for VSD School Board Recognition. Awesome job, Brayden, and congratulations. Our next two students were unable to attend, but I do like to, to read about them because they've shown excellent work at Mount Whitney High School. This would be for reading growth. Juana Aguilera Ariano is our student for reading growth, and she has been nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Keller. Juana has shown tremendous interest in improving her reading skills this year. After several weeks and one-on-one meetings with her, I realized she was not just learning to read, but learning to read in English. In our first meeting, it was apparent that she was still working on early literacy skills. So we began with the basics for emergent readers of English. Then I realized that she was simultaneously learning what the words meant. This is no small task for anyone, and Juana comes in class every day, ready to push herself and eager to learn. She's grown so much this year, her work ethic and attitude will see her through total success in all her studies. Mount Whitney is so very proud of Juana, and she represents what, what is best about Mount Whitney. Congratulations to Juana Aguilera Ariano. Our next student, who was also unable to attend, he is Mount Whitney's Social Science Outstanding Student, and that is Gustavo Rivera. Gustavo was nominated by Mr. Souza of the Social Science Department. Gustavo is being recognized for his academic efforts and quiet leadership abilities. Gustavo has excelled in AP European History, US History, and is currently excelling in AP Government and Politics. He does this with, while continuing to carry a full schedule, including other AP courses, and has a 3.4, 3.48 GPA. Gustavo's love for history spills into his hobbies and time away from school. He can be found hanging out with his friends, playing historical-based games, including discussion of the relevance and accuracy of the game. Studying the past, learning and connecting to what the future intrigues, Gustavo. After graduation, Gustavo plans on becoming an emergency medical technician. He will start at COS and then find a job as an EMT. He hopes to make a difference in everyone's lives. Our Social Science Team is proud and honored to present Gustavo Rivera as Mount Whitney's Social Science Outstanding Student. Congratulations to Gustavo. Our last two students are our USAV Winter Students of the Season. Our first up is Faith Bither. Faith, will you step forward? Thank you. Faith's parents are Brianna and Matthew Bither, and she has been nominated by ASB. Faith is a proud senior at Mount Whitney High School. She's been in the Health Science Academy for four years, where she found her love in the medical field and everything science-related. For the last three years, Faith was the goalie for her water bottle teams. During her senior year, she broke the school record for most gold saves on the girls' team. During the offseason, she swam for a varsity swim team, and Faith is also a part of the Key Club and the Fellow Christian Athletics Athletes Club. After high school, Faith plans to attend COS and finish her prerequisite classes. And then soon after, she wishes to transfer out to a four-year university, maybe UC Berkeley, and pursue a career in the medical field. We are proud to congratulate Faith for her nomination as USAV Winter Student of the Season. Congratulations, Faith. And our. Is Gabby Campos. Gabby, will you step forward? Please excuse, after we're done, she's gonna run off. She has some cheering to do, as our basketball team's in the middle of a playoff game, so. Gabby is, her parents are, excuse me, parents are Henry and Angie Campos, and she has also been nominated by ASB. Gabby is a senior who has made. She's been a leader in ASB for four years and spent her senior year serving as our ASB president. She previously served as one of our youngest ASB vice friends her sophomore year. Gabby was also part of our homecoming court this year. She's an outstanding student representative and currently serves as our Student Site Council Representative. Gabby's been part of our Academy of Health Sciences for four years. Central Valley Blood Chief Organizer. She's involved in CSF cheerleading, Link Crew, and she is the student representative for Mount Whitney's Equity Team. Gabby is an amazing student leader and has without a doubt made many positive influence among her peers at Mount Whitney. We are very, very proud of Gabby and her accomplishments. Congratulations, way to go. Thank you all for recognizing our Mount Whitney students.
Next up, we have Principal Matt Shin and the students of Redwood High School.
Student in choir is Cameron Dice Man. Successfully completed Life Management, Foods and Nutrition classes prior to this year. And now as a senior, she is currently enrolled in our Human Development Class as well as our Food Service and Hospitality Class. She has also been an active member in our FCC LA and plans to compete in the salad prep competition at our regional competition next, this month. After high school, she would like to go on to college and become a kindergarten teacher. I am very proud and honored to present to you Madison McCurcher. Our next student representing the Industrial Technology Department is Christian Vargas. Christian was nominated by his teachers, Mr. Eastman, who I think is in attendance tonight, and Mr. Rooney, and they had this to say about him. "Christian has been in my wood shop for four years, through the good and difficult times, but always willing to take on another challenge in the shop. He's been an active member in Skills USA and competed in cabinetry and carpentry. Christian has also been in metal manufacturing class for four years and has learned to work independently in the shop and is familiar with all the processes. He always has a good disposition and is easy to work with. He stays on task until he's completed his work. Christian is eager to learn new things and ask questions when he is unsure of the best technique. Christian is able to work well with his hands and knows how to use the tools of the trade. Christian's future plans include attending COS before going on to a trade school for carpentry and construction management. I am very proud and honored to present to you Christian Vargas." Our next student representing the Social Science Department is Vismad Randhawa. Vismad is supported tonight by his dad and mom, Balraj and Gurjit Randhawa. Vismad was nominated by teacher Mr. Shefferley and Mr. Vera, who had this to say. "Vismad is one of the hardest-working students I have had the pleasure of working with. He is a fantastic student and even better young man. He has all the qualities a teacher could wish for in a student. He is hardworking, smart, intellectually curious, and participates in class on a regular basis. He's often the leader in group activities and is a barometer by which his peers are measured. He shows courtesy to myself and other students on a daily basis, and he possesses good nature about himself and is very mature for his age. Vismad not only strives for success in his social science classes, but in all of his classes, where he's maintained a weighted GPA of 4.03 since his freshman year in high school. I'm very proud and honored to present to you Vismad Randhawa." Our next student is gonna be recognized for outstanding student achievement in reading growth, and that's Adrian Hernandez Medrano. Adrian is supported tonight by his grandma Isabel Leon and his uncle Jose Medrano. Adrian was nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Fulmer, who had, who wrote the following. "Adrian is respectful, is a, is a respectful, highly motivate, self-motivated human who has worked hard to be where he is today. On a day-to-day basis, Adrian routinely shows respect towards staff and peers alike. He is thoughtful and sympathetic to the feelings and needs of others. Adrian has grown as a person and as a reader/learner more than anyone we have seen lately in our department. He is a leader in the classroom and someone whom teachers know they can count on to keep classroom dialogue going. Adrian has taught himself to read for deep meaning and understanding in every class and type of text. On a daily basis, Adrian is at school eager to read, write, learn, and grow. Adrian has jumped five grade levels in his reading skills in the past, in the last four years due to his diligence and perseverance. His joy when learning new skills and concepts make teaching him a real inspiration. I am very proud and honored to present to you Adrian Hernandez Medrano." Our next student will be representing USAV for outstanding, as an outstanding student, and that is Lexi Ellis. Lexi is supported tonight by her parents, Scott and Julia Ellis. Lexi is part of Redwood's ASB, where she holds the position of junior class president. Lexi offers great ideas and uses her strengths to improve our campus. She leads quietly, confidently, and openly. Lexi cares about those around her and is extremely kind in her thoughts and actions. She regularly tries to find ways to help be involved with campus activities. Lexi strives to make sure junior class is involved and tries to carry on with the strong traditions of Redwood High School. She is a true Ranger and is always looking at ways to improve. I am very proud and honored to present to you Lexi Ellis. And our last student, it was out sick today, and she did text me and apologize for not being able to make it, but I'm gonna read this about her. She's another outstanding USAV student, and that's Savannah Torres. Savannah is part of Redwood's ASB, where she offers great ideas and lively spirit. She is extremely reliable and creative. She creates and films weekly videos and posters for sporting events and activities. Savannah has always, always has a laugh that is contagious and a warmth that radiates wherever she goes. She is a hard worker and is always looking at ways to better our campus. Savannah is the ASB Spirit Coordinator, coordinator, and she has been tasked with teaching our students the traditions and expectations that go along with being a Ranger. She handles her ASB responsibilities and schoolwork with ease. She has a deep love for Redwood and exemplifies what it means to be a true Ranger. I'm very proud and honored to present to you Savannah Torres.
Thank you. Our next school to take the stage, the Eldi Amate High School, with Principal Kim Nelson.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, board members, interim superintendent Cardozo, students, parents, and families. My name is Kim Nelson, and I am the proud principal of Eldi Amate High School. It is both an honor and a privilege this evening to present this great group of Eldi Amate students with recognition for outstanding achievement awards. The first award recipient is Atalia Guerrero. Atalia, Atalia is being recognized. Yay, Atalia! Atalia is being recognized and honored by the Eldi Amate Choral Department, nominated by Mr. Justin Witt, who's here this evening. Atalia Guerrero is a four-year member of the Eldi Amate Choir and Band Programs. She has been a member of the EDHS Chamber Singer since her sophomore year. She has been active in the music programs, both as a leader and a soloist. Additionally, Atalia has participated in the musical for the last two years. Atalia is a multi-talented young lady. She is a shining star, often on the stage. It brings me great joy to present the Choral Department Award to Atalia Guerrero. It brings me great joy to present the Coral Department Award to Atalia Guerrero. LD Monte's Art Department has chosen Michelle Park as a student of distinction. Michelle? Michelle has produced amazing work in her advanced art class. She's an outstanding student, artist and a person. She is a very talented character creator, but has shown a unique ability to create using multiple styles from realism to street art. Michelle is a sophomore with a 4.0 GPA and is a member of the LD Monte CSF and Key Club. Michelle also enjoys science. After high school, Michelle plans to go to college and study graphic design. With great enthusiasm, I would like to present the art award to Michelle Park. I am pleased to announce that Cindy Tai Agua Abarka has been chosen to receive the student recognition for outstanding achievement award. She was nominated by the music department. Cindy is a student that is always sacrificing her time to help her peers in and out of class. She is admired for, she is admired for that among all her classmates in orchestra. The desire to make everyone feel welcome and accepted is expressed on a daily basis in class and throughout the entire school. The success she has in the orchestra program stems from her hard work and dedication outside of the class. That she demonstrates through playing tests and seasonal car concerts we have in the program. Since this is the last year, the orchestra program will, will really miss Cindy and her contributions next year. But her lasting impact will continue to inspire the younger classmen to be a leader in their own way. It is with great pride and pleasure to present the orchestra award to Cindy Tai Agua Abarka. Alyssa Lackey is the recipient of our Consumer Family Studies Award. All right. Alyssa is a four-year retail food service and production student. This year she has become a class leader and is looked to for her experience and knowledge. She was the first student to pass the OSHA culinary certification. And this is a really intense safety training on all things commercial kitchen related. There is a certification test at the end of the training which need to be passed with at least a 75%. So she was the first to excel. She's, you know, a great student in retail food, but also she excels in all of her courses. She has a cumulative GPA of a 3.8 over her high school years. She is very focused on her education and looks forward to the challenges that college will offer. She is quick to help out her peers and offers assistance where needed. She is a kind, she's kind to everyone she interacts with and always shows respect to each person. Ms. Bethel, her food production teacher says that there's just not enough good things to say about Alyssa. She will be very successful in whatever future path she chooses. Congratulations to Alyssa. The outstanding recipient of the Industrial Technology Award is LD Sanchez Marin. Mr. Perez, our automotive teacher at EDHS says that LD is an exceptional student. He has taken it upon himself to help clean up the auto shop in every way possible for his and other students' future in the auto program. Mr. Perez says that LD helps give direction to students when they need extra help. LD is always eager to learn. In fact, Mr. Perez says that LD has developed an immense amount of knowledge about the automotive industry. And Mr. Perez believes that LD has a bright future coming his way. Congratulations to LD on this great accomplishment. The reading growth award goes to Ludwin Baraza Rivera. Ludwin started his freshman year in a regular English class, not knowing the language of the class, but being a brilliant student. The language barrier proved to be something that could not stop his success. Ms. Elder, Ludwin's freshman English teacher, says that Ludwin was not a student to be easily discouraged, but worked hard to understand even as his language proficiency developed. Mrs. Perez comments that Ludwin challenged himself as a junior to take AP English Language, which is a challenging course for native English speakers. Mrs. Perez shares that in his class, he was an eager learner, asking, in her class, he was an eager, eager learner, asking questions, participating in whole class discussions and reading difficult texts. Even over Zoom, he always had a smile on his face. Lastly, Mrs. Jolly, Ludwin's AP English Literature Teacher is amazed by him. He excels in her AP Lit class and offers, you know, all often offers to volunteer to read Shakespeare, Greek plays aloud to the class. Ludwin is always positive, always eager to learn and always pushing himself to learn more. Congratulations to Ludwin on this great recognition. Ms. Taylor Bennett is the recipient of our social science award. LD Monte High School would like to recognize Taylor Bennett as the outstanding student from the social science department. Taylor has taken all five social science AP offerings here at EDHS. AP Human Geography, AP European History, AP US History, AP Gov, AP Psych, you name it, she's taking it. And this year's new offering of ethnic studies. Mr. Rice comments that as a freshman in his AP Human Geography class, Taylor performed at the highest level. She consistently produced AP level work and was an active contributor to her, to their daily lessons. Her curiosity, desire to learn and ability to grow as an AP student has allowed her to excel at the highest level throughout her high school experience. It was an honor and a privilege to have her in my AP Human Geography class. Taylor has a 4.37 weighted GPA, is a four-year avid student, CSF all semesters, member of our mock trial team, president of our academic decathlon team, president of the Asian American Pacific Islander Club, link crew leader, member of the interact club, and is the key club lieutenant governor for this region. She is also the coordinator of the Central Valley NEDA, which is the National Eating Disorder Association. That's, that's a mouthful. Ms. Jacobsma, her avid teacher, had this to say about Taylor. Taylor exemplifies the spirit of avid, both academically and in citizenship. Throughout her four years in the program, she has embraced avid and the wider LD Monte community as her own family. She has served as an avid club officer for the past two years, in addition to her officer roles in Key Club and Academic Decathlon. She also has a heart for serving others. Taylor is definitely a remarkable student. Her goal is to attend UNC Chapel Hill next fall and major in clinical psychology. It is with a great deal of pride that I present this award to Taylor Bennett. Our winner, USAV Student of the Season is Dahlia Mendoza. And Dahlia couldn't be here this evening, but I'll say a few words about her. Dahlia has been a member of the student government for four years. She has held several positions during her tenure at LD Monte Student Government. Dahlia is the senior class president and the technology lead for assemblies. She's also served as the ASB treasurer. Dahlia is committed to the students of LD Monte and takes the lead role in planning and implementing events that are inclusive and focused on spirit and school connections. You can see Dahlia is in the student section of sporting events, encourage her team and students. She's a very motivated student. She has a 3.89 GPA. She's very active in clubs. She plans to study business after high school. And Dahlia has been nominated for more than her academic achievement. She's well-rounded, strong character and in a great work ethic. So that was Dahlia Mendoza, who unfortunately cannot be here this evening. Gerrick Singh is our EDHS winner, USAV Student of the Season. Gerrick has been a member of the student government for the past three years. He is currently serves as our ASB Vice President and President of the Minor Senate. He has worked diligently to improve the climate of LD Monte and the communication between the students of and the staff by holding regular senate meetings with over 90 student representatives. Gerrick is a motivated student athlete and active community volunteer. He has a 4.689 GPA. Gerrick has been a member of the minor basketball team and tennis team. He is a member of the Key Club, CSF, a link crew leader, ASB Vice President, FBLA President, Green Club Plus President, and the founding president of the medical minors. In the community, he has participated in the Valley Children's Hospital Kids Day, CDC Foundation, Bethlehem Center, Turkey Drive, and is a peer tutor. Gerrick has been nominated for his outstanding character, personal achievements, and his work to improve all the school for all students. I'm very proud and honored to present Gerrick Singh with the Winter Student of the Season. There's an old saying that there's nothing finer than a minor, and so these are a great group of minors that I'm super proud of.
And last up, but certainly not least, let's welcome back to the stage, Mr. Mike Lambert and the Golden West Trailblazers.
Good evening, once again. Board President Guerrero, interim superintendent Doug Cardoza and members of the board and members of the audience. My name is Michael Lambert and I'm the principal at Golden West. And tonight I'm here to recognize some outstanding trailblazers. We have seven total award winners tonight, four of which couldn't be here. We're in the middle of playoff athletics and we have games going on campus right now. And unfortunately, some of our kiddos couldn't be here, but I want to talk about them as well. The first award winner we're going to talk about is from the VAPA program or Visual and Performing Arts. And this is the Performing Arts Award winner Frankie Hartman. Go ahead and step forward Frankie. Frankie was chosen because of her leadership and her hardworking skills she's exhibited in performing arts over the past four years. Frankie was in color guard for all four years of school and drama for all four years. She was a team captain and officer or, and held an officer position in both programs. She's also excelled academically throughout all four years. Thank you for always giving your best and for being a constant leader for our younger classmates to look up to. Frankie Hartman. Our visual arts winner is Sierra Williams, and she couldn't be here this evening, but there's some outstanding information about her. She's an outstanding artist. She excels with the project goals and prompts for creativity. And then she goes above and beyond them. Sierra's interests are vast and yet she can focus on a single topic of interest and create original artwork expressing her unique voice, demonstrating the quality of an independent learner. Sierra works inside and outside the classroom on assignments. And she even identifies her own questions to solve visually and expressing her voice through recycled materials, infusing new purpose into objects as she responds to both the wasteful nature of culture and the value in the aesthetics. She inspires her peers and me with her extraordinary creations. She shows pride in craftsmanship and she willingly helps her peers when they are struggling. Anyone in her presence can sense that she's a thinker, bursting at the seams with creativity to contribute to the world. And that is Sierra Williams. Our next award winner is Diego Vega. And he's an award winner for industrial education. Diego Vega is the most outstanding student in Golden West Automotive Technology Program. Diego stands out more than any other student because of his persistence to become better every day in auto shop. Diego is currently in his second year in auto. Diego never says no and is never afraid of a challenge. This past year, Diego's completed numerous tasks for his own personal vehicle, teacher vehicles and customer vehicles. Diego plans on attending Reedley College where he will study being a heavy diesel mechanic. I'm very proud to acknowledge Diego Vega for his outstanding achievement here at Golden West. Diego will succeed in life, not only because of his great attitude, but because of his willingness to take on any task. Diego Vega. Our next award winner was unable to be here tonight as well, and her name is Adeline Lopez. Adeline came to Golden West from Mexico halfway through her freshman year. Because she valued the importance of being able to speak, read and write in English, Adeline quickly picked up the new language. She has always been focused on her education and truly values the opportunity to attend school in this country. She continues to challenge herself by selecting rigorous courses. Furthermore, she does not take for granted blessings that she's received nor the sacrifices her family has made in order for her to attend school here in the United States. After graduation, Adeline wants to continue her education. She hasn't yet decided on a major, but is thinking about psychology. Congratulations, Adeline. We are proud of you. Our next award winner is for social science, and that's Dawn Kim. Dawn is an outstanding young lady and student in AP Government and Economics. She consistently performs at the highest level on exams and her writing is insightful, well-supported and thought provoking. Dawn is a natural academic leader. She is never boastful about her performance or her beliefs. In AP Government, Dawn wrote an exceptional paper on affirmative action and its effects on racial minorities with a level of maturity in her writing that we have rarely seen. Ms. Kim demonstrates a calm competence matched with dignity in class, along with respect. Mrs. Kim also received As in AP European History and AP US History. She's highly respected by her classmates and staff. Dawn maintains outstanding grades in all of her classes, ranked first in her class while being very active in school. She's a CSF lifetime member and a member of the inaugural National Honor Society Chapter at Golden West. Her natural leadership skills combined with her passion for learning makes her the ideal choice for outstanding achievement student in social science. Dawn Kim. Our final two award winners, also unfortunately that couldn't be here tonight, are Sylvie Gonzalez and Brayden Barcelona. Brayden is currently on the basketball court. From basketball to AP classes, from senior class president to dedicated employee, Brayden Barcelona is the epitome of a well-rounded student. Over the last three years, Brayden has served as one of the core members of the student body leadership as a sophomore, junior and now senior class president. During that time, he has shown dedication to bettering the campus by always being willing to put himself in front of the student body, lead by example and constantly reflect on what is working and what is not working. When something doesn't go right, Brayden's, Brayden doesn't place the blame elsewhere. Instead, he knows how to take responsibility and work to solve a problem. On top of that, Brayden is one of the kindest people on our campus. He works to include others in many activities that we have, pressures people to stop engaging in negative behaviors. And he always knows how to lighten the mood with a joke or a laugh. We are lucky to have Brayden in our class and he's a great representation of what it means to be a trailblazer, and that's Brayden Barcelona. Our final USAV Award winner is Sylvie Gonzalez. It's hard to put into words what exactly makes Sylvie so an integral in the leadership on campus. Perhaps it's because she knows how to work hard through tough circumstances. Perhaps it's because she always offers to help others when they need it. Perhaps it's because she stays involved on campus. Or perhaps it's simply because you can always guarantee to see a smile on her face when she walks into the room. Regardless, the positive energy that Sylvie shares with her fellow students is the bright spot on our campus that extends beyond the ASB classroom. As cheer captain, Sylvie has helped guide the team through internal struggles about the identity of the group. As the ASB secretary, Sylvie has pushed the young leaders and student government to become better in every day. On top of that, Sylvie is engaged in a challenging academic schedule as well as taking on a job. It's also easy to be proud of Sylvie for how she supports and takes care of her brother. It is not often you see siblings in the same class that so deeply love and care for each other. Sylvie is a wonderful student who every day blazes the trail of joy, kindness and care across campus. Once again, Sylvie Gonzalez. And thank you to all of the outstanding trailblazers that were here tonight.
Before we leave tonight, I want to congratulate and thank all the parents, guardians and significant others for that had an impact on the growth and the raising of our children, our students. These are higher achievers and I'd like for the parents, the guardians and the significant others to please stand up, please. Thank you. You've raised some fine students. And with that, we conclude tonight's awards.